Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock on April 5th, 2022. It's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We begin each meeting that we have with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our prayer this evening. And in Vice Mayor Fennell's absence, I will ask Councilman Van to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with me, please.
Let every heart pray. Eternal grace of God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you dear Lord for this city and what it stands for. And I pray of God for every councilperson on this panel. I pray that everything we do will be pleasing your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray in every heart's head. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Kitchell's not here this evening, so Ms. Alexander is going to be helping. And you will call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell. Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Van.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. You do have the minutes from the March 15th, 2022, City Council meeting before you this evening. Have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any corrections or additions requested? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. Now we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone that's here this evening can address the council and the mayor on any item that is on the evening's agenda. If you have an item that's not on the evening's agenda, you may address that at the end of the meeting. But right now, it's public recognition on agenda-related items. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address. You'll have five minutes to speak. With that, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
My name is Bob Maola. I live at 425 Paisley Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. Now, last time you did this on the 15th, I was having heart surgery, so I didn't listen to this. I've had calls since then from people, my neighbors, in that district that are totally opposed to this. They said they called their representative.
Sir, you may wish to speak what item you're speaking to.
Center Street and DeMoss, that you just passed, okay? I get people over there calling me that they don't want it. They don't want it. Now, I know I was going to go through this baloney. I told them already. I says, "I'm gonna go speak, but they're not gonna let me speak about it because they won't let you speak about it."
You can speak at the end of the meeting if it's not an item that's on the evening's agenda?
It's on the evening agenda, DeMoss. It's on the third item.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's the public hearing. You can speak now, or you can speak under the public hearing.
Speak now.
Okay, that is fine. But I was just, I was trying to tell you.
Am I speaking English?
I was trying to tell you to please reference what you were speaking about because you were speaking to something as if we knew what you were referencing. Just trying to be helpful.
This is worse than a legion meeting. I go through this at the American Legion.
I hope you're more respectful to them.
Anyway, people call their representative from the Clearview area. The representative never calls back, promises they'll call back, telling why they're doing what they're doing. Forget it. And I know you folks already have it voted on, and I told them that. So forget it. Whatever you folks want, it's not gonna happen. And they know, I know. It's the same thing with the county. It's a school board. It's the same thing here. You guys have your side agendas going, and it's gonna go.
Sir, you need to keep it to the item that's not on the agenda.
If that's on the item, you already have it passed.
You should keep it to the item that's on the agenda. You're kinda going off the rails a little bit. Let's keep it dialed in.
Listen, I'm an American citizen. If I want to go off the rail, I'll go off the rail, okay? We voted for you.
Sir, you need to.
Is this on record?
Please. I hope so, because you have been very rude. I welcome you to speak, but I need you to speak.
I'm rude? You won't call my constituents, and I'm rude?
Yes, you're being rude, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, next, whoever would like to speak to anything that's on the evening's agenda.
Maybe I can help him out a little bit. I am LeWenda Black, 514 DeMoss Street. And I come speaking in opposition of agenda item number three. I really have concerns about the proposed homes that is going over there and the rezoning. I would really hope that this rezoning would not go through. The site that they're proposing to build these homes is nothing but a dump. It's an old dump site over there. If they build houses over there, I'm afraid that over time, sinkholes are gonna form, the houses are going to go down in a hole. It's gonna fall on the residents because the builder is not gonna be concerned at that time. Also, there's a concern for traffic. It's already a high-traffic area over there. So what's going to be the ins and outs of that area? There's concerns about crime. Of course, you know, you get a lot more people, you might get a lot more crime, and we need to try to decrease the crime instead of taking a chance on increasing it. What kind of harms are these gonna be? Are they gonna be affordable? Everybody's affordable, it's different. Is it gonna be where a person that makes under $35,000 a year can afford to buy a home? Or is it gonna be a $500,000 house where the average person can't buy one? I mean, has this really been thought out and really planned? I have talked to some of the other residents over there. They didn't even know anything about all of this going on. They were in the dark. I didn't even know anything about it till I came to a council meeting, and it was on the agenda. Then I happened to write down in that area, because I don't go in that circle at all, heartily, and there was one little sign, but it was after the meeting. So I'm just, I really have a lot of concerns, and I would like to know if this has really been thought out, or if I'm just up here just wasting my breath talking. Has it already been passed, or what? But I am really in opposition to it. I really don't think that's a good area for anything to be built on a dump site. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to tell everyone, you can go ahead and sit down if you want. You can listen as you go to your seat. But tonight is a public hearing. It has passed one reading, and it will be voted on a second time. If you missed the discussion about the actual plan, our planning department, Mr. McCord, raise your hand. Our planning department would be happy to speak through it with you so you can see what the concept is, and then it will be considered at a later meeting. But I did not mention when I introduced public comment on agenda-related items that there are, in fact, four, five, public hearings this evening. So you may speak now under public recognition on agenda-related items, and you will also have an opportunity, or an opportunity, to speak under any of the public hearings that you may be interested in, just to clarify. So right now, anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on public recognition on agenda-related items may do so. Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And I will move now to mayor's comments. I do have just a few things that I want to mention. First of all, I want to say a huge thank you to our Gallatin Fire Department. We had one, we had six firefighters that went over to Sevier County and helped with the wildfires that they had over there. And I'm so proud of those firefighters who were willing to go. I am so proud of our fire department because I think they know that they went with our full confidence, and I am very confident that not only did they go and do their job, they represented well, and they were leaders as they put themselves in a very perilous situation. So I want to say thank you to Assistant Fire Chief Scott Woodward, Battalion Chief Ben West, Lieutenant Tody Eisenberg, Lieutenant Sean Raymond, firefighter Kyle Warren, and firefighter Owen Donald. You guys did a great job. Assistant Chief Woodward's here tonight, so thank you. Also, I want to mention that the Miracle Park, Friends of the Gallatin Miracle Park, had an egg hunt this weekend. I got to go and see those precious kids hunting eggs. It was awesome. It was so fun. They had the best time. And it was, they had so many things set up, and there were food trucks there donating portions of their proceeds, some of them, all of their proceeds, to benefit the organization that supports our Miracle Park. So that was super awesome. So I want to give my compliments to that board on their inaugural egg hunt. Well done. And finally, I will mention, and I just happened to see this when I was at the county yesterday, and then Mr. Kellogg brought a copy tonight, and I think we're gonna get some copies for Mr. Brown as well, from Mr. DePree's. But this is the Tennessee Public Works Magazine, and if you recognize the cover, I said, "That looks familiar." So not only is the Gallatin Miracle Park on the cover of the Tennessee Public Works Magazine, there's a two-page spread inside. Also, I want to mention some events coming up. Sorry, that was my timer. Coffee and Connect with Gallatin Public Works. That's Mr. DePree's and Ms. Johnson. That's happening tomorrow morning at Cave, 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., in association with Gallatin Chamber. This Saturday and Sunday, I think that's right, the 8th and the 9th, is the Boutique Bazaar at Baxby Ranch. That's an annual shopping event that brings a lot of people to our community is happening. And then on the 9th, we have the Gallatin First United Methodist Church Easter Egg Hunt, and the Easter Egg Church at Northfield Church, and the Greenway Steak Dinner and Auction. Then I want to remind everyone that the 15th of April is Good Friday. City offices will be closed. And on that Saturday is the Gallatin Farmer's Market Spring Plant Sale happens from 9:00 a.m. to noon on that day. So that is it for our events. I do, at this time, I want to invite a couple of special students to the podium to join me because we have a couple of proclamations to present. So at this time, if Kira DeFreeze and Zachary Johnson would come forward, I would welcome you. After your name and picture, proclamation. It will be deserved forever, right? You guys can come over here and stand with me. And if Coach Atkins would like to come up here with us? I mean, I think successful, I think great coaches have something to do with successful athletes. Would you agree? Excellent. Let me give my photo, Mr. Panchelson, take a photo for us. And I would welcome your parents to come forward as well if they want to. If y'all want to come up and take pictures, you can come up here. You'll have a much better view. So I have two proclamations tonight with us from Gallatin High School. We have two outstanding young wrestlers, and I'm delighted to recognize them tonight. So I'm gonna start with you, Kira, and I'm gonna read this. So this says, "Whereas Kira DeFreeze is a senior at Gallatin High School in Gallatin, Tennessee, and whereas she is the drum major for the Gallatin Greenway Band and a female wrestler, and whereas Kira has a 10-5 record with seven wins by pin, and she finished third in the region, and was awarded the MVP plaque for female wrestler, and she finished top 10 in the state as a first-year wrestler, and whereas Kira made Gallatin High School history as one of two students to make it to the TWSAA State Wrestling Tournament, I Page Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby recognize Kira DeFreeze for her many accomplishments and being a role model to others." So present that to you. Okay, and now I have Mr. Zachary Johnson. And you can stand by me. And this says, "Whereas Zachary Johnson, also known as ZJ, is a senior at Gallatin High School in Gallatin, Tennessee, and whereas he excelled in wrestling and football, and was 28 his senior year with 16 wins by pin, and whereas he is captain of the varsity wrestling team, and whereas CJ took second place at the Beach Invitational, and he finished third in the region, and was awarded the MVP plaque for male wrestler, and finished top 10 in the state in his weight class, and whereas ZJ made Gallatin High School history as one of two students to make it to the TWSAA State Wrestling Tournament. Now therefore, I Page Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, to hereby recognize Zachary ZJ Johnson for his many accomplishments and being a role model to others." So. Now back to you. Do you want to get a picture with your coach and both of you?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Does that sound good? There we go.
There we go.
There we go. We're gonna start over here? Next. Absolutely. Thank you all. And parents, congratulations to you, and thank you for raising such outstanding young people. Ooh. I'm all over the place tonight. Oh, you put my phone back. And that will conclude mayor's comments. I told them they didn't have to stay for the meeting. They might be bored. And you might concur. Okay, we're moving on now to the regular agenda. Item number one this evening is a dangerous building complaint in show cause hearing. This is for 129 Ross Avenue. And Chuck Stewart and Susan Homicoli are going to address this.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The first building I have to, I'm gonna bring the first one to you, would be on 129 Ross Avenue. If you had time, look through your package there. You will see all the photographs that were submitted. This building is unsafe, unsanitary, unsecure. It's missing floor joists. It's got broken ceiling joists, doors, frames falling off, windows missing, no electrical, no gas, and no water. Sewer lines are broken. And we have been in contact with the owner. He has returned his mail, his certified letter back, and on the phone, he spoke about demoing the house for us. But we have not had any movement, we haven't received anything else from him. So at this time, I'd like to ask you to move this to a show cause hearing and declare the dangerous building, please.
And Mr. Stewart, if you would just give a little bit more information, and would you tell the council that the building has been tagged appropriately?
It's the building that was tagged with a dangerous building notification on it, and we wait days until we hear from anyone. If not, then we send the certified letter out, which they did receive, and they did sign for and return to us. So they did get receipt of it. And we did, like I said, we did speak to this Mr. Leva, and he said that he would be demoing, but we haven't heard another word from him since that day.
And in addition to the letter that your office sent out, I sent out the show cause notice and complaint, and we did receive the certified back on that as well. And following that, that is when the owner contacted you. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And under the municipal code 5-241, you do deem that this is a dangerous and building unfit for human occupational use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the owner of 129 Ross present this evening? We would like for you to come forward if you are so that we can get both sides, if you're present. And to your knowledge, Mr. Stewart, none of the conditions that were listed in the dangerous building complaint show cause notice, none of those have been corrected. Is that correct?
There was no change as of Friday afternoon.
And there are pictures that are in your packets? And so based on this testimony, Mr. Stewart has recommended that the property be demolished. Is that correct?
Correct.
And he has requested that you deem this a dangerous building and unfit for human occupational use. Owner is not present, so if council has questions, you can ask those at this time.
I think the photos speak for themselves.
Go on and make a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna move that the building located at 129 Ross Street is, or Ross Avenue, is dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use based upon the staff report, the dangerous building complaint, and show cause notice the entire record before us and the testimony presented tonight. The owner shall have 30 days to either dismantle and remove the building, or bring the building into compliance with applicable codes, or the city shall demolish and remove the building with all costs assessed against the property owner as a lien, and order shall be issued to that effect.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for any discussion. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of declaring this a dangerous building, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, it is unanimously approved as a dangerous building. Item number two is dangerous building at 1359 South Water Avenue. Mr. Stewart, Ms. Homicoli.
Yes, and is the owner, Mr. Mayor, are you present?
Yes.
There you are, yes.
Yes, Ms. Homicoli.
If you want, I do, if you want to come on up, you may come on up. And when Mr. Stewart gets finished, then you can give your side of what's going on here. Mr. Stewart, if you'll go ahead and just state your name for the record again, please.
My name is Chuck Stewart. I'm the building official for the City of Gallatin. This property, 1359 South Water Avenue, Gallatin, Tennessee. This is a double-wide modular home. This home was tagged prior to the construction of the widening of 109. It's located up on the hillside. I'm sure most of you have probably noticed this thing. So when this construction started on 109, this one slipped through the cracks on us a little bit. Construction traffic was parked on the side there. Many things were going on. But we did go back and re-tag it again. If you notice, there's a picture in your package of two different postings where it was deemed a dangerous building. Well, it's in the condition it's saying with, it's broken. It's got lots of issues with the property. Mr. Mayor and I had a conversation. I believe that he realizes that this property can't be saved. So therefore, based on the condition of the property, it's unsanitary, it's broken, he's got other issues with the property. We request that this be moved to a show cause and also deemed a dangerous building. According to the site visit I made on Friday out there, he's got other issues that to get this unit off of there is gonna be extremely difficult for him. So that's why I asked him to come tonight to speak to you. He is, he's dealing with it, but in the same sense, I need to move it forward. It'll help the city, and it may assist Mr. Mahabharata in what he's trying to do there. So I'm asking you to move it forward and declare the dangerous building.
And Mr. Stewart, will you just expound upon a little bit why you think he's gonna have difficulty removing the building?
Well, when they widen the highway, the grade off of the highway up to this piece of property is extremely steep now. Has no access from the other side. It's only off of 109. So it has nothing to do with the city here, per se, because it's a state highway. So he is in contact with TDOT about his access to his piece of property he has there. And I'm sure he's brought the things that he's brought with him tonight. But again, I say, it's still for us and the Building Code Department for the declaration as a dangerous building because that's exactly what it is. Unsanitary, unsafe. And I think that he would like to speak to this if it's okay with you.
Mr. Mayor, if you would want to address the council and explain your side of the story?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I believe my rights have been stepped on. The purpose of saying this, I have approved because I talked to Ms. Homicoli. First of all, this building was not dangerous, and it was not tagged prior to the auction. When they auctioned it, I bid on it. So that building was good building. It was not demolished, demolishable, or endangered place, or inhabitable, or anything like that. All right, when they start widening, because I have Mr., I believe it's Kitchen Estate Appraisal, the appraisal paper with me. When they start widening it, I agree with them to widening it, but they promise they're gonna treat me right, and it's gonna be better as it is, the situation, by widening the street, I mean, the highway or whatever, South Water, if you call it highway or street, whatever. But anyway, they promised me it's gonna be a better condition. The slope gonna be better, and it's accessible. Me and Ms. Homicoli and Mr. Clark, Kellogg, went to the job site. We discussed. They said, "Okay, we're gonna move." I said, "Well, what I'm looking at, you put the gas line, sewer line, water line, and crouching in my property, and it's close to the building." Ms. Homicoli said, "Don't worry about it." Is that right? If I'm not right, correct me, please. Me, Dr. Chris Mayer, which was my other son, and Mr. Clark, and Mr. Greer from TDOT, we were all at the job site, and you said, "After the highway is finished, all gonna be pushed back to the state." I mean, right away. This didn't happen. They made the property inaccessible. A steep, very steep land. They made it, "No way I can even clean up the yard. No way." Next door, 1357, I don't know you had been aware of it or not, a teenager supposed to go in that practicing baseball next door, which he was building supply, then they changed it to baseball practice. That guy was run over by his own truck because he forgot to put it in a park position, and the truck rolled over him because it was so steep. I don't know, nobody raised any voice about that teenager dead. I don't know, Ms. Homicoli knew about it or not? Have you been aware of it? Did they sue the state or do something about, you know? Because that's the situation they created. I tried to go ahead and cut the grass. Estate and also the city put the water from the sewer coming to my yard, and it was so wet, I thought it was a dry day, but it was so wet. Even the police department knew about it, which they came to help me because my push mower was sliding down, and I was dragging it with the rope. And they saw me. They saw me, I'm struggling. They came to help me. At that day, it was a robbery on those storage buildings, and that's how they saw me. I was struggling with my lawnmower. Is this fair? They promised they're gonna return them back. I talked to Mr. Greer. We sent them letters. I'm gonna distribute, go ahead and distribute these to them. I discussed it with them. I'm sorry, I got six of them. I didn't know how many people are gonna be here. Six copies. Six copies. We discussed it and they agreed to come and correct the problem, but then they said, well, we don't have a budget for it unless we use the maintenance budget to do something about it. I talked to John Zirkel, is a P.E. civil engineer, manager two, region three, project development at the state. This is his card. We went and discussed the situation. He said, okay, what do you suggest? I said, sir, you know, you're a civil engineer, I'm a mechanical engineer. I can tell you what we can do. He said, okay, what do you recommend? I said, all right, we have two choices, actually three choices. Choice number one, instead of ditch, we're going to put, you can, I mean, you can put an round pipe or oval pipe, whatever you suggest and easier for you to do in a drainage area and push the dirt down so the slope at least comply with met, I mean, with the Gallatin codes. Gallatin code requirement is three one, not one and a half one. That's very steep. So, I actually didn't comply with, I mean, Gallatin code. I talked to Mr. Greer and Mr. John Zirkel, which he was the practice engineer and he said, civil engineer at the state. He said, well, we discussed it with the mayor and mayor said, whatever you suggest is everything is okay. Duh. So, here I am, doing nothing. Everywhere I went is no answer. We text them, this is the text. And we discussed it with them again. I said, okay, option number two, you build a retaining wall. That's, Gallatin code says it in their code book, it says it. They can rebuild the retaining wall and push the dirt down so it's not going to be dangerous. They didn't do it, they don't want to do it, it's very expensive for them. Number three, option three, whatever state engineer decide to do with that land, you welcome to do it, you suggested to me. Now, if they don't want to do it and if they force me to do something about the building, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to get a bulldozer, all right? Push all the dirt down. Now, it's going to, I'll tell you what's going to happen. It's going to damage the sewer line. It's going to disrupt the gas line, water line. Mr. Klog, no, it isn't crouched in my property. They asked me to purchase it from me, purchase the part of the land. If I gave it to them and if I sold it to them like I did to the state, then I would be... I'll tell you what, you guess it. It was sad, it was sad story. I can't do anything about the building. You put a handcuff on me and said, do something. What do you want me to do? I'm on shackles, my foot is chained, my hands are tied behind me. What do you want me to do with this building? There's no way I can move it, it's so steep. So, here I am, you decide, I obey. You have the power, I can do anything. So, please, put it under consideration. You put yourself in my shoes and see if it's right to treat the person like that or not. If you don't feel it's good and it's correct, then don't do it to me, please. I greatly appreciate your listening and your patience.
Okay, so you've heard from Mr. Mayor and that most of the people he was discussing, they are with T-Dot, is that correct? When you stay there with the state...
With Mr. Kalog, with you.
Well, we didn't do the slope, we didn't, that's all on T-Dot, that's the state. And the state widened the road. Mr. Kellogg came to me and we worked with Mr. Mayor on putting the water line in, that is correct. And I don't know if Mr. Kellogg, are you here? I don't know if he wants to expound on that at all, but we're here tonight on the dangerous building and that it is broken apart. And according to Mr. Stewart, it was tagged well before the construction on 109 began.
No, no, it's not true, it is not true. After I let them to use the land, I didn't rent it out. I didn't do anything about that building. The people who were the worker, because it was a cold weather, they pushed in, broke the windows, doors, moved in, put a lot of trash. I have a paper here and with me and which actually I came and talked to you about it and I said, this trash were not there at the beginning.
Well, the trash that you and I discussed was down...
And then you took responsibility, ma'am.
Was down in the ditch. You had gotten a letter from our police force and you brought pictures to me of picture of litter that was in the ditch. I agreed with you, it was construction debris. We did not find you, we did not do anything. And we did have someone, we had T-Dot come out and clean that up for you. That is, we didn't talk about anything being happening to your building. That you never told me that, that your windows were broken, that they broke your building. That was never discussed. It was trash because you'd gotten a letter from Ms. Jackson in the police department.
I believe you. In this part, I believe you on that one. So, yeah, you took care of the problem and you notice, these are the trash left by T-Dot worker.
Correct. And we got that cleaned up for you.
And appreciate you done that and you ordered it without, to remove, be removed without any expenses.
Correct.
Right. But actually, the building, I didn't talk about the building because I really didn't care. At that time, I didn't care. Well, I do care about the building, but I didn't think they're going to demolish it that bad. I mean, they're going to mess it up that bad. I said, well, it's cold weather, they need to go somewhere, you know? So, if they broke the window, so how about the heck, you know? I'm going to change it with $50 or $100, so it's not a big deal. So, breaking the windows is a hundred dollar. But removing, demolishing the building and a steep slope, no way I can do anything about it, that's something it bothers me.
Mr. Stewart, do you have any testimony that you'd like to give on when the building was first tagged? Do you have any, any documentation with you?
I don't have that date, I'd have to get with Officer Jackson. But if you notice the photograph that's in your package, you'll see a white placard and you'll see the yellow placard. The white placard, the date on it is not readable to me in this photograph, but I can do some more research to pull that. But the dilemma that I have as a code official is this building is sitting in the city limits of Gallatin. The access to it is through the T-Dot right of way. Nothing I can do about that. It is a dangerous building, I didn't know about someone getting run over out there, but I don't need something to happen to somebody else's kid to get up there and get crawling around the building like that. So, that's why we tagged the building up, okay? So, we went back and re-tagged it on the 22nd of January, or I'm sorry, the 4th day of January, when we started out the new year here. I can't, I don't know how to give a recommendation on this. I really don't because if you go to the site and look at it, the only way to get it down from there is in pieces. And the building is in that bad a shape. I mean, it can be, but if he wants to come back and replace it in spot where he's at, yeah, he's never going to get that done. I don't know anything about the sewer, I don't know anything about the right of ways deals that they've made out there. You know, we try to help everybody we can when it moves or anything like this. But this one here is just above me. There's been more conversations that I'm not aware of about this piece of property.
I got a question, please. Were you compensated by the state for when they took part of your property?
Very little, very, very little.
Have you read your contract?
Yes, I do have it and, but I didn't, you know, agree to let the water and sewer encroaching my property. Actually, the city of Gallatin sent me a letter, we want to purchase part, another part of the property. I said, no, no. You can use my property to, what, to build or widening the highway and after you finish, you have to move the water line, sewer line, gas line to the state.
That's the point I'm getting to, what does your contract say?
All right, I have it, I have the...
You don't have to get it out tonight. My suggestion would be to go see an attorney about it, read the contract and think you have a case with the state. It's not really a city issue if the state purchased your property.
You didn't purchase all of the property, correct, Mr. Mayor?
But they were compensated for what was purchased, I mean, what was purchased.
It's not only the estate problem, it's a city problem too.
It's going to be a city problem because of the sewer, the gas line, whatever, but what I'm trying to get to is who is actually responsible for it?
For the slope?
I've run into the same issue, believe me, I sympathize with you.
A state is responsible for the slope.
I found out one of my contracts that I had to hook my water back up.
Right, so...
Okay, if I could, Mr. Stewart, did you say you can't make a recommendation on this?
I'm recommended, I will recommend a show cause hearing to move to, and declare a dangerous building. Everything else has been brought in this picture, I can't make a recommendation as a building official about right of ways for T-Dot and water lines and sewers as Mr. Kellogg's field behind us on this building. I stand by my statement, this is a dangerous building. It's been tagged twice and I'm asking to move it forward.
And Mr. Stewart, do you think there's a way that he can remove the building from the property?
Yeah, it's going to have to be in pieces. I mean, is he going to have to get a big hole or something out there and break it up and get it off of there? Because he can't get up to it.
Mr. Mayor, what did you want to do with the building?
Okay, as soon as they ease down the slope, then I will demolish it, remove it. It's dangerous. Yeah, they can, it can be rebuilt. There is nothing, you say you cannot rebuild it, all right? It was a trailer, all right? And then it can be fixed, it can be fixed. But it costs more to fix it than remove it. It has to be removed from that area to another place and rebuilt it. Now, I can rebuild it down there, but with no electricity, it's going to be difficult. If I remove that one, then I'm going to lose my right to grandfather law, which I can put exactly the same place as the old building is. I'm going to lose that privilege. So, that building going to stay till they fix the slope, fix the problem, and then I'm going to remove that building.
So, your problem is mostly the slope that T-Dot caused?
The slope is the biggest problem. Because once I remove that building, all right, or demolish that building, then I'm going to lose my right. I'm going to say, it looks like this. In a war zone, you have a gun. Gun is your protection, you can fight with it. Once you lose your gun, I was in military, they told me, you lose your gun, you lose your rights. All right?
Have you considered suing the state like Mr. Van...
I don't really think we need to be given any advice from his counsel as to what his legal rights are.
Excuse me, I'd like to...
I'm sorry, but there's a lot of noise coming from the room that's being very distracting up here. If you guys would hold it down, please, thank you.
I'm going to correct you on one thing here, Mr. Mahabharata. You cannot rebuild a mobile home. Mobile homes are built in factories, inspected by a state inspector in the factory. The state of Tennessee does not allow you to rebuild one that's been damaged. You can, you can call them and ask them and deal with them and plead with them, but you can't, they're not going to let you because it's not the same thing as building a home. It's either take this one out and put another one in and a demo contractor can get it out of there. But I don't know if any mover can put one back up there, what he's facing there. It'd take a lot.
So, is the reason that he's saying he don't want to tear it down is because, once it's moved, is it because our zoning is not allowed? Mr. McCord might have to answer this for me. Is it because our zoning is not allowed for him to put another one like that if that one's moved or tore down? Will he not be able to put another mobile home there once he deals with the state of Tennessee and gets access to that property? Will he not be allowed to put another double-wide there, Mr. McCord?
Bill McCord, City Planner, I hadn't been involved in this case. I think the property is zoned commercial, so residential use wouldn't be permitted. As far as replacing a building, the existing building, once it's removed, then all new buildings that would be replacing a building would have to meet the zoning code requirements when talking about setback, bulk area requirements.
So, your answer is you don't know if this particular piece of property is zoned to put another double-wide on that property?
I think it's zoned MUG, if I'm not mistaken. Property's up and down that portion of South Water.
Which means he can put one on that property, correct?
Next use general, I don't know, I haven't been involved in this case. I just know from a zoning standpoint.
Okay, I guess this question is to you, sir. Who told you couldn't put another building on there if you tore this one down?
Well, actually, this gentleman said, you have to put a new, you can put a new building, you know, if, but you cannot rebuild that one.
Right, I understand that because this one can't be rebuilt, so you got to move this building. But you just told us while ago in your testimony that if you move this property and somebody told you that you could not put another building there, and I'm asking you, who told you that?
Well, code, actually, it's not going to be comply with codes.
A new building is not going to comply with, a new mobile home won't comply with codes? It comes out of the factory complying with codes?
New building is not going to be comply with codes. Because it's not permitted to have a mobile, I mean, well, actually, mobile home, yes, you can. But not a trailer, that one is a trailer. That one is a trailer. It's not going to be permissible to put another trailer down there, even if it's brand new. And it's going to be hard to put one in there anyway. It is hard. You can demolish that one, take it apart and drag it down out of the property, but you cannot put a new one in the same spot, you can't.
You're not allowed to put a residential mobile home back in that spot.
That's what I'm asking.
But he would, his intentions were to put an office in here. He could buy a modular office home, yes. And he would meet the zoning out there if it's what Bill says it is here. He could meet that, put an office.
Okay, that answered my question. That's why I wanted to clarify that, you know, who told him he couldn't put another building there? Because it sounds like you can put another building there if this one's tore down. It sounds like you can put a modular there and your access to that property would be with the state of Tennessee and not the city of Gallatin. Okay? I mean, I, what we have to do is decide if this building needs to be tore down. And according to our building official, he's saying this building is very unsafe and it needs to go off of that property. So, once it's gone off of that property, then it's your, it's your, it would be your concern with the state of Tennessee to be sure that you get that resolved with the state so you can put another building there on that piece of property.
Okay. How about the water line, sewer line and gas line? They are in my property without my permission.
Excuse me, Mr. Kellogg, can you come forward, please? You explain what you know about the situation, Mr. Kellogg.
David Kellogg, Superintendent of Public Utilities. We purchased easement from Mr. Mayor on this property when T-Dot did the road right of way.
Show me the proof.
I have a recorded easement, so I will.
Yeah, 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 show me. Did you record it in the courthouse?
Yes.
Let me see it.
I don't have it with me, but we do have, I'll make you a copy of it.
Then I'm asking you, please, don't.
Please let Mr. Kellogg speak. Mr. Councilman Overton, ask him forward to allow him to speak.
So we did, we did purchase easement for water sewer, gas extensions for the T-Dot road project. Our conversation with Mr. Mayor, when myself and Ms. McCauley met him out there, was the gas line was placed on the upslope side of the sewer main. It should have been on the downslope of the sewer main. We had the contractor move the gas line down, back into the easement between the sewer line and the ditch.
Okay, I agree with you. I'm gonna go ahead and get the bulldozer and move it. You don't move it, I'll move it.
Okay, we're, we are inappropriate here. Hey, I think, I think what everyone is trying to say is that we need to address the dangerous building part, and that is your charge this evening, and so we need to dial it back to that if we can, okay?
Mayor, may I favor? You're all, I'm asking you two, please don't make a decision here. They correct their portion. Your portion is correct the, remove the water line, sewer line, gas line from my property unless they show they have a proof of purchase. They didn't pay me. I didn't get any money for it. I wanna see who got the money.
Sir, they can get you that information. It's probably in your contract. But regardless, we can get you that information about the purchase of the easement. But again, this is about the dangerous building and the threat it is to the public. And so we have to address that as it's presented by our building official. I understand that you have concerns with the state and also with our utility easement, but that is not what this is about. So I'm.
I understand what you're saying, Ms. Mayor. The question is, is no way I can move that building? Is no way I can.
That's not appropriate, not appropriate.
It is like staying on a cliff. Stay on a cliff and say, jump.
Sir, ma'am, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna jump, but how far I can get.
There, there will be a professional that can handle the demolition of the building.
They cannot. I cannot remove it with another.
If you did, if you, if you get into a, if, if this council declares it a dangerous building and you cannot find a council. Sir, sir, I cannot speak while you are yelling at me. I, if you cannot find a demolition contractor that can handle the job, I think you could come back to this council and, and explain your position, and we could try to figure out some option. But there has to be a way to remove a building. They remove buildings on top of mountains all the time, so. Ma'am, that is quite inappropriate. The situation is that there is a dangerous bill, or there may well be determined that you own a dangerous building that is a threat. So let's stop the conversation. Let's let the council have the conversation. They will ask if they have any more questions, okay? Councilman Overton, sir, let's let Councilman Overton speak.
I'm asking.
Sir, 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 let Councilman Overton speak. Sir, please, please refrain from speaking and let Councilman Overton speak.
Mayor, I move and make a motion that this building located at 1359 South Water Avenue, city of Gallatin, is a dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use based upon the staff report and dangerous building complaint and show cause notice. Then the entire record before us and the testimony presented tonight, the owner shall have 30 days to either dismantle or move the building from the property, bringing the building into compliance with the Code Department, or the city shall demolish and remove the building with all costs assessed against the property owner as a lien. An order shall be issued to that effect. And I so move.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman George. Is there any further discussion by this council?
The only thing that I want to say, I just didn't understand that is how he's gonna get, well, I, I just don't see how he's gonna be able to get up there to get that. And what happened to the right of way that he had when the building was livable? Is that not existed anymore?
Honestly, do I, what I believe will happen now, once the building is declared, he can go to the state and say, they've declared it my building, I gotta get to it. And he may get some movement. No, there's no, nothing happening for him. I've looked at every piece of paper he had and there's nothing happening. So it's still not our responsibility as the city, because it's state right of way, you know?
Is he landlocked?
He's landlocked.
That should have been negotiated in his contract originally. That's not, that's not our responsibility.
Mr. Tuttle, have you had any exposure to this?
I don't know anything about this situation, but while everyone was talking, I looked at street view and there is a driveway there. It's just steep. That's what he's complaining about. So he's not landlocked, he's just, what they're saying is they can't, because of the steepness of the driveway, they can't carry the, the trailer out to the highway. So Mr. Stewart is just saying that it's gonna have to be broken down into pieces to haul it off.
Would you mind, would you or someone from your department reach out to T-Dot?
I know John Zirkle with T-Dot.
And ascertain what the true circumstances are?
The slope does look steep, but again, we're talking about a, a two, you know, a double-wide trailer. So I don't know that there's a possibility that they can make an improvement to pull a double-wide trailer off of that lot or put one back on it. It's, I'm sure it meets T-Dot's requirements.
Well, I, I think what this council would like reassurance is that there's not some agreement for an improvement that they haven't performed. And I think if this council has.
Just looking at the street view, it, it looked like a normal, steep, but normal T-Dot driveway that they would put back for residential property. And I would guess that that is basically what T-Dot has told him. Now, it did look funny that there was a ditch behind the sidewalk on a curb and gutter section, and they probably could have dressed his yard up better and got a better slope on his yard, just based on what I saw, but.
I really feel for him.
The driveway itself looked.
I honestly really feel for him. I know he's, it's probably between him and the state of Tennessee, to be honest with you.
Right, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it can be fixed.
But our buildings are code officials, and we don't want nobody else to die in that building. And that's the only reason I made that motion, because we don't want nobody else to get hurt up there.
Right.
As he said, somebody's already, you know.
He was speaking of an adjoining property.
The next door, I know, I know, I know. But if it's as steep as that is, I'm really concerned. But anyway, hopefully, they'll find a solution to it now that we're making this, and hopefully we'll find a solution to it. Thank you, Council.
So it's, all we are really talking about is the dangerous building tonight. And Mr. Mayor said himself that it was dangerous and he thought it needed to be demolished, so.
Motion is second. Is there any further comments or discussion?
I, I just have one other question, and just me. Is it appropriate to give him 30 days, or should we say 60 days?
Well, the, the motion says he has 30 days to remove it. If you remember when we discussed this before, dangerous buildings, once you issue the order, they have 60 days. They have 60 days where they can either get a permit by law, they can get a permit, or, or they can appeal the decision. They have a lot of rights. So he has 60 days to try to, to work something out.
Okay.
Nothing's gonna be happening tomorrow.
You know, everybody on here, if something can be worked out, we will, you know, do what we have to, so.
Okay, motion is second. Anyone else? All right, all in favor of declaring the 1359 South Water Avenue property as a dangerous building unfit for human occupation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number three is a public hearing on ordinance 02203-12. And I apologize for all the folks who may be here for public hearings. Usually those first two items don't take quite so long. But this is public hearing on ordinance 02203-12. Councilman Alexander, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is all of the city of Gallatin, Sumney County, Tennessee, residing in 14.67 plus or minus acres from the R10 medium density residential district to R8 PRD medium density residential plan residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for the Holland property located west of Center Street and north of Demol Street, authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this may come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one, I will declare public hearing on ordinance 02203-12 closed. Item number four is public hearing on ordinance 02203-15. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Lowe's and a preliminary master development plan for Double Star Hotel. A four-story, 71,876 square foot hotel on 3.76 acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and east of Brown's Lane, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
The public hearing on ordinance 02203-15 is now open. If you'd like to speak, you may come forward.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Pascal Javance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to update you on my search of finding a place where a hotel sit in a parking lot of a home improvement laws or Home Depot. And I went to Tulsa this weekend and I got really excited because a van driver was telling me there was a Home Depot right there at the Hilton. So I say, yeah, we're not gonna be the first one to do that. But when I arrived, I was disappointed because I was on the other side of the highway, so I haven't found that yet. I think the site is not appropriate for a hotel. You know, Councilman Fan, you drive there every day to go home and, you know, you know it's not appropriate. And what was really interesting in the discussion last time is that there was actually a discussion on the hotel where when you guys pass the hotel in Apartment City back there on Greenlee, that was not, not a discussion. So it's really interesting that when that's gonna affect one of you, and we're really interested on how that's gonna look and make sure the top of the hotel is not gonna be visible from the road and all that stuff. So again, I don't think that's appropriate. There's probably a better way to use that space with some kind of other business. But again, I haven't found yet a place where there is a hotel in a parking lot of Lowe's or Home Depot. I will keep you updated if I find one. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under this public hearing? Okay, this is public hearing on ordinance 02203-15. I will declare it closed. Item number five is public hearing on resolution R2203-30. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services upon the annexation of a .70 mile-long segment of Big Station Camp Boulevard right of way extending from Vietnam Veterans Boulevard to south of Lakeland Drive, comprising approximately 13.6 acres and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, this is public hearing on resolution R2203-30. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one, I will declare public hearing on resolution R2203-30 closed. Item number six is public hearing on resolution R2203-31. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, annexing of a .70 mile-long segment of Big Station Camp Boulevard right of way, extending from south of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard to south of the intersection of Lakeland Drive and Big Station Camp Boulevard, comprising approximately 13.6 acres, authorizing the annexed right of way to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorizing the assignment of annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing on resolution R2203-31. Anyone who wishes to speak may come forward at this time. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I will declare public hearing on resolution R2203-31 closed. Item seven is public hearing of the city of Gallatin Plan of Service Progress Status Report. Vice Mayor Fennell is not here this evening. I will, well, I pretty much just introduced it, so we can roll with that. If there's anyone that would like to speak to that, you may come forward at this time. This was on the report presented last week.
Good evening, Mayor Brown. Good evening, Council. I'm Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I'm gonna make a few comments about the Plan of Service Progress Status Report that's required to be published yearly. The city of Gallatin is in default on the 2008 Plan of Service for the annexation that includes my property on Long Hollow Pike. The planned sewer was to be completed within five years. It was not. It has not yet been completed. It's been 14 years. There is no plan to complete it, as far as I can tell, because it's not listed on the long-range sewer plan that was recently presented to you all by our Director of Public Utilities several weeks ago. And I'm here to remind you that the city is required by state law to publish a report on the progress made toward fulfilling the Plan of Service annually until it is fully implemented. I'd like to see the city of Gallatin follow the law and stop annexing property into the city until we are caught up on fulfilling prior promised services. The city is in default on several annexation plans for police services. Our level of police service is now currently at the level that was required with the 2008 annexation of my property 14 years ago. That is how short-staffed we are in our police department. Remember in November of last year, you did a temporary rate of pay adjustment because the city is having difficulty fulfilling and retaining certain critical positions. Many of our critical infrastructure departments are short-staffed and stressed. It is not fair to them to continue annexing without giving them a chance to catch up on services. I would like to see you do a moratorium on annexations until we are caught up with our current annexation plan of services. For example, I'm gonna give an example of our police department. I believe that currently we have 100 employees with our police department. With the the temporary raise that you all did last year, there was 107 police positions, and we were short-staffed by 16 at that time. I think that we have filled some, but I believe that we have 100 at this time. I'm not sure, Chief Bandy could confirm that. But in 2007, our police department had 92 employees, and that included 61 sworn officers. And the 2008 Plan of Service required adding five officers plus two, two support staff, so that equaled 99 employees. So if we have 100 now, and that was 14 years ago, we're kind of at the same spot. In 2008, Gallatin's population was 29,579. I remember a few weeks ago, Mr. McCord, right here at this podium, saying that our estimated population is now a little over 49,000. MTS recommends an officer-to-population race, weight ratio of 2.55 per 1,000 citizens. At our current population, we should have 125 officers. Even if we use the 2020 census data of 44,000-plus population, we should have 113 officers, and that doesn't include support staff, that's just officers. So again, many of our departments are stretched thin, and this is not their fault. But it is because we've been annexing too much, too fast, and that is your fault. And we can't keep approving annexations into the city. I think we need to have a moratorium on annexations until our city services can have a chance to get caught up. Just from, since I've been paying attention for the last several years in the Plan of Services for annexations that have happened, the police department Plan of Services report indicated that additional officers and vehicles would be needed for the Meadows, for the Facebook Data Center, blood. the Meadows, for the Facebook Data Center, Bloodsauce Springs, Cumberland Point, Twin Eagles Phase 15. So just for those, we're short-staffed in our police for the Plan of Service that was required. So we are in default. And I know until a judge, actually a court declares that the city is technically in default, you are not technically in default, but I think that you should follow the law regardless. And that's all up to you. Please follow the law. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing? I seeing no one, the public hearing on the City of Gallatin Plans of Service Status Report now closed. Item number eight is second reading on ordinance 02203-17, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating ARPA, American Recovery Plan Act Fund, in the amount of $2 million for Cleveland Park Improvement, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Is that you that seconded that? Okay. Second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02203-17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number nine is first reading on ordinance 02203-13. Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, contracting the municipal limits of the City of Gallatin by removing an approximate 34.7 plus or minus acre portion of territory from the city jurisdiction located north and west of the CSX Railroad right-of-way and including tax map 146 parcels 02600, 02700, 02800, 02802, 04100, and 04200, and adjacent Avondale Road and State Route 386 right-of-way, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Can we have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion? And we are passing around something that was received from one of those residents.
Yes, and if I may speak to that.
Absolutely.
Council, you had asked, when you moved this on, you deferred it until this meeting. You asked that I send a letter. Mr. McCord had already sent a letter to the homeowners, the property owners. I did send a letter. I specifically asked that they contact me. I even did this little form that you'll see and asked them to mark whether they supported the de-annexation, they opposed it, or they had no opinion. To date, I've only received one response. I didn't know, are there any property owners that showed up tonight that have not contacted me? I know that there was a gentleman that showed up before planning at the Planning Commission, but I did receive this from Brenda Valentine. She is a property owner of 1285 Avondale Road. Her tax ID is 146.026.00. And she also sent a letter. And if you will look at that letter, she really sets out why she is opposed to the de-annexation. And I, do you want me to read the letter into the record?
I just read it. I mean, it's good points.
Very good points. Let me ask you this. Is there some way that we could make a de-annexation effective upon sale of property or something? Because I see not impacting these few homeowners who are there, but. Well, you'd have to have all the properties sold, and we don't, I mean, who knows? That could be 50 years from now. So I would not recommend that. I don't even know that that would be legal. Really, we've done this backwards because what happened, the reason that we're in this position is that this property is no longer in the urban growth boundary. And that decision was made. It went through all the committees. And then when it came through planning, now we're asking, do the property owners want to be de-annexed? And really, that should have been taken. If that, that's not legally what you're required to do. In fact, legally, as Mr. McCord, I think, stated to you, they have legal recourse by doing a referendum if they don't oppose. And I do understand why council wants to have the opinions of these property owners. But we are in a situation now where this is no longer in our urban growth boundary. And now if we don't de-annex them, we're going to have property in the city limits that's not in our urban growth boundary. And I suppose, Mr. McCord, I've not done this, but I suppose we can go back and get that changed and have them added to our urban growth boundary. Would that be accurate? And if so, that's what we're going to need to do.
We could do that, just as we did with the Big Station Camp Road Corridor.
I'm sorry?
We could do that, like we did with the Big Station Camp Road Corridor.
Okay. So, you know, I know everyone wanted to hear. We've got this one property owner. She puts out a lot of really good reasons as to why she opposes the de-annexation. And we did have another property owner that came to the Planning Commission meeting and said that he opposed it. He has not responded to my letter yet, but I do know that he was opposed. No, I think there's five.
There's three homes.
Three homes, but there are, I think there were five. I would have to go back and look. I think there were five. Mr. McCord, do you have that number with you? I didn't bring all of the letters with me. I'm sorry. One of the owners, one of the property owners is the Rogers Group.
There are six parcels and five property owners. Rogers Group owns two of them.
You know how many have structures on them in which?
Houses.
There are three, three properties.
And they're the ones who are going to care. I mean, the others wouldn't care because these three houses want it for city services. I understand.
Mr. McCord, is there a long process to go back through and put this in our growth urban boundary?
Not too long. I think the last one, three or four months.
It's funny, most people, most people don't want to be in a city, but things don't want to come out of the city. So, you know, I would suggest that we go back and let them put this in our growth boundary.
Sure.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Motion is second made, so that motion, second, need to be withdrawn.
Correct.
Second.
Councilman Fan made the motion.
Yeah.
And Councilman Alexander, second.
I withdraw my second.
Withdraw a second, withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my first.
Any motion?
Put him back in.
Or not to de-annex them, actually. Actually, does any action?
Can take them out.
Or just advise Mr. McCord that we're going to go back through and the process, Susan? What do we need to do?
Yeah, if you don't pass this ordinance, I mean, you may want to just vote it down. But if you take no action on it and we don't de-annex, then you just need to instruct Mr. McCord. You can do that by way of motion.
Can we defer it at this point?
Uh.
Can we defer it at this point?
Well, we just ask Mr. McCord to go through the process. I mean, that's what we need to do. And I think we just done that, so.
We voted down. There's no action can be taken.
Well, if you don't have a motion and a second, and you don't act on it, then you're not going to pass it. So we're not going to de-annex. But you need to. Mr. McCord is going to need to know how, what you want him to do. You need to give him the authority to bring this, start the process to bring it back into the urban growth boundary.
I think that is the council's, that's the council's will, is that he goes through to change, to change back the urban growth boundary for that particular area. And so we'll take no action at this time, and he will bring that back to us when it is ready to start going through those motions. See back at the local government, Planning Advisory Committee at the state again. Does it have to go back? It does go back through the state to change that, even though it's just between Gallatin and Hendersonville. Okay. All right. So we're going to take no action on item number nine and move on to item number 10, which is first reading on ordinance 02203-16, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $32,150 from various budget lines for a Gallatin EDA vehicle purchase. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02203-16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Item 10 is passed unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 02204-18, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on 02204-18. Ordinance appropriating $687,741 from donations from businesses to Gateway Drive Extension Construction. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fan. Was that right over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we hear from Mr. Fenton, please, on this item?
James Fenton, Economic Development. Last time this came in front of you at the workshop, the number was in the high 300,000s. And after final accounting, after cost overruns, after gas surcharges, everything, putting it all together, the price has now been, to cover the full cost of construction, is now the $687,741 that's in front of you. And just to confirm, because I had a question earlier, I just want to confirm that Meta is paying for 100% of this road. There are no tax dollars involved in all of this.
That was well explained at the last work session, so thank you for reiterating that. Any questions for Mr. Fenton? Any discussion?
I'd like to say something. There's a lot of social media discussion about all of the monies that's going to Facebook. And I just wanted to say a couple of things on the record. That Meta paid approximately $4 million for the extension of Gateway Drive, creating another needed safety access to the industrial center. They also, at the completion of these two buildings, Meta will be the largest revenue stream in the county, paying $1.75 million. With the completion of the next planned building, that will jump to $2.45 million. Previously, all of the property was in greenbelt, and the county was receiving minimal dollars. I think that we need to let the people that see this as a detriment see this as a money-making project for the entire city and kind of change a little bit about what's going on. People talk, and we need to address those things.
I appreciate you saying that, because we're getting a lot of social media flack about it. And I just wanted you to, I'm glad you clarified that for us.
Very large revenue stream for the county, too. That's important.
I'm glad you said something, too, because that's how bad information gets out when people don't really understand things.
Any further discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02204-18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 12 is resolution R2204-36, Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, to participate in the Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the Greater National Regional Council. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Love. Any discussion? Okay. Resolution R2204-36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. And that concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I do have just a couple of things to run by this body. One, Ms. Hi McCauley advises we need this council to vote on. And this is an application from the Rosemont Restoration Foundation. They are applying for a special occasion license so they can sell alcohol at some of their fundraising events. Says the Tennessee State Government is requiring a letter from the owner of the property. The landlord gives permission to allow alcohol sales. So they need our permission, but rather than the mayor granting the permission, this council needs to vote and see if they are okay with that. Motion by Councilman Hayes?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions?
I just need to disclose that I'm on that board.
Oh, I do, too.
Thank you both for your service on that board. That is a city-owned property, in case anyone doesn't know that. So, okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. I also have a road closure application, and this is from, I'm guessing it's from First United Methodist Church. Yes, Gallatin First United Methodist Church. This is for their Living Cavalry. It happens on Friday, April 15th, from 11:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. It would be West Main Street being closed from South Locust Avenue to North Water Avenue. Have all the appropriate signatures. I do want to, I guess, remind our department heads that we kind of bumped into an issue with the last road closure. We will make sure that T-Dot is properly notified and that that permission is granted by them as well. So we need to navigate that. But so it's from South Locust to North Water. Main Street is closed, 11:30 to 12:30 on April 15th, with this body's permission. Motion by Councilman Hayes?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. All right, passes unanimously. That is all of my other business this evening. I would ask if anyone else on the council has any to bring forward at this time? Ms. Hi McCauley, sorry.
That's okay. A while back, we discussed Fire Hall 5, and we've been doing some remediation out there. And there was some general discussion at a work session, and you gave me the go-ahead to move forward with that. I went back and listened to those, to that meeting, and there was not a formal motion. So before we file suit, I want a motion from this body that you want to file suit to recover any costs that we have with the Fire Hall 5 flooding issues.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Anyone else with other business to bring forward? I seeing none, we will move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. We're at the end of the meeting, and this is the time where you can come forward and speak to any item that's not on the evening's agenda. Again, you'll have five minutes. We ask that you introduce yourself and share your address.
Good evening again. Thanks for having me again. So I would like to remind you that you all took an oath when you accepted that position to protect and follow Gallatin Municipal Code. So as you know, it's election time. And as you remember, the last election, I kind of became a specialist on sign and all denunciations regarding signs. So we all drive around, and we see some sign popping up. So I'd like to remind you a couple of things. You know, say you don't understand me when I speak, so I took pictures. And we're going to talk about numbers. So.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yes, ma'am. So here's a picture of a sign. It was on a private property today. So if you can see the tape, the tape say a little more than four feet. And on this one, the tape say a little more than six feet. So six by four, that's 24 square feet. City ordinance say that sign on private properties do not exceed 16 square feet. So that's the real size of the sign. There you go. So again, you took an oath to follow the ordinance. You act citizen to follow the law. And that would be nice, you do the same. So now we have another one. With this one. As you can see, it's a sign on a trailer parked near a street. All right? So.
Your comments to the council, please, leave her department.
Yeah, no, I just, the chief asked me a question, so I wasn't there. The Gallatin Municipal Code, Section 16161, say, "No person shall park a vehicle in a parking space adjacent to a public street where the primary purpose of parking such a vehicle is to display a sign, advertise a product, or otherwise seek to attract the attention of motorists using said right-of-way." And the best part of that say, "Any vehicle so parked shall be subject to immediate..." to immediate impoundment. There is no going around that. There is no interpretation that say immediate impoundment. So, Chief, you have a sergeant back there. I'm asking you if you can apply the law and send a patrol back there, ticket that vehicle, and impound it, following the city ordinance. And again, the word here is immediate. On top of that, the city ordinance prohibit sign on trailers. And, you know, I know that had been done at the last election. We talked enough. There was some violation later sent. So again, I'm asking the police department to go impound that vehicle following the ordinances. And I want you to know that tomorrow I will do a FOIA request to get a copy of the police cam of the officer who's going to go there, to get a copy of the impoundment and the police report on that vehicle. Again, if you ask citizen to follow the law, you should do the same. On another hand, I want to thank Councilwoman George and, Councilwoman George, sorry, and Love, because I was happy to see you attending the budget hearings. So that shows that you're interested in what's happening with the city. But you were the only two, so. But thank you for that. Good evening.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is closed. And that brings us to the final motion of the evening. Motion to adjourn, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening. Be kind. Take care. Good night.